Glad everybody could make it to the work session tonight. And I think we've got some folks in some storms out there, so maybe we'll be able to stay on and not lose everybody. But we've got a short agenda tonight, but important things we need to discuss. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Nolte first, and then I think Trevor's on the agenda as well, and Ms. Barker.
Yes, just a couple of opening comments, board members. When, when school starts, right before spring break, right before summer break, right before the Christmas holidays, we seem to have a flurry of activities. I believe it's a little earlier this summer with all that's going on with COVID-19 and everything that's going on with the law and policy. Had a statewide superintendent's meeting yesterday with the Department of Public Instruction. They're still scurrying around anticipating the governor's announcement sometime next week at a regional superintendent's meeting. And then I sent you a couple texts today about some other things that are going on. So just know that we're available, myself, Trevor, Jill, and others, Jason, whatever the topic is. If you have questions, you can give us a call. But we have been quite busy, even though it's just the week after the fourth. We want to give a couple of big updates. One is on facilities and other things related to support services that Dr. Putnam might have. And then Mrs. Barker and her folks have been working very, very hard on reentry educational plans and remote learning plans. And so I'll just jump in if they need some assistance. But Dr. Putnam, at this time, we'll, we'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll talk to you briefly about the progress we've made on the new central office building, the old Annex Two. The roof replacement is 95% complete. Due to the cladding that we may put on the outside of the building, they've put a temporary cap or band around the outer edge or fascia of the building. That's the only reason it's not 100% complete. So that's an intentional 95% complete. As indicated earlier, the asbestos removal and abatement is complete and demolition is complete. We met this Monday with the architects and just a myriad of engineers, structural, electrical, mechanical. And those engineers were able to come in and get the design specifications they needed, actually walk through toward the facility, figure out where things need to be situated within the building. And they, the engineers in conjunction with the architect are actively working on a devised set of plans and construction documents to be put out for bid by contractors. We hope to have for you at the end of July. I know Mr. Burnett and I've talked with Dr. Rogers about elevator and multiple-use bathrooms. We have some plans that we'll be looking at in Building and Grounds on Monday that incorporate those things. And what we hope to have is three options to present to you in the very near future. The first option being a turnkey exterior completed, interior completed, all utilities and mechanical completed, a turnkey proposal as one option. A second option will be the interior mechanical, all the things that go on inside the building with us self-performing the exterior of the building being option two. And then option three, the addition of an elevator. And so that's the, the three options we hope, hope to be able to put before you in the very near future. But I appreciate the feedback and ideas that many of you've shared. And we've tried to incorporate those as we go. This week, I've been actively working with all three levels of our current office space. And there was enough room that everyone could go through and kind of label or identify where they'd like to work. And that, that has went very well. We vetted the plan again in a support staff meeting this morning with additional feedback. And so what I can tell you is as far as the interior layout or plan is going, it's going very nicely. And it looks like we're going to have plenty of room for storage and for office space and bathrooms, just all the things that we would need to be able to operate successfully. So that's kind of where we are with the central office project. Would there be any questions anyone wanted to ask?
That all sounds good.
All right, great.
Sounds good, Dr. Putnam, sounds really good.
The rest of our projects we'll, we'll discuss in Building and Grounds. And we may have some action or updates. Are there any projects in particular any of you would like to ask about at this time?
I have one question. Are we going to do some paving over the summer to some of the parking lots or some of the? What are your thoughts about that?
We did create a small, a small amount within the capital budget that all of you approved for patching. However, with the other large costly projects that we had in there as well, all it was was patching for this school year or this coming school year. We do have hope or plans to, in the future, do larger scale paving. But for this year, it will just be patching.
Yeah, I was, I was just talking about just general patching, just potholes and things.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Good question.
Yeah, I have one. So we are going to try to put an elevator because I thought we had talked about not putting an elevator on the main office because there was two accesses.
Right. It will be provided as an option. Nothing has been decided definitively. Building and Grounds will discuss that and either bring forth a recommendation to put one in or not. But we'll have information on that. And it's really too early to put numbers to what that would cost. As I said, the engineers just came in this, this past Monday. So once we get a little more accurate information on the cost of that and a pretty close location of where that would be, it will be an option that all of you would vote on.
Okay, and I guess we can, we can talk about it later. But I guess, is there a, is a lot of pluses for it? Or I would just kind of curious, if we need it, I'm all for it. If we think we need it, I was just wondering, so.
Right.
Okay, can I say something?
Go ahead, Ann.
The thing about it is you're probably, well, going to have some people that are going to come in there that may not be able to use the steps like me. So you're going to need something for them to be able to go from one floor to the other floor. So that's why an elevator is really, I mean, in my opinion, and being disabled with a handicap, in my opinion, that that's going to make it easier for people, like maybe some older people that come for, you know, but people with disabilities or something like that are not going to be able to get on the upper floor if you don't have an elevator.
Thank you, Ann.
Well, and it, Ms. Francis also, right now, everybody that works in the building may be able to use stairs. But at some point, we may have someone with a disability that will need to be able to move from floor to floor, not walk around the building to different parking lots, so.
That was my comment, Dr. Rogers, thanks. You beat me to it.
I, I got it. That makes, makes more sense. I understand what you're saying now. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
All right, other questions or comments for me?
You have an update? Trevor, do you have an update on the turf or anything, on how that's, you know, is it just on hold for right now or?
It, it is on hold for right now. We did receive our lottery money. We actually received it last week. And Dr. Nolte let me know, he texted me, let me know while I was at the beach. But we did receive our 1.3 million that we asked to pull down. So when all of you decide it, it's go time, you know, again, we'll discuss that in Building and Grounds. If Building and Grounds feels ready to make a recommendation to the full board that we proceed with the project, then we'll do so. What I can tell you is plans are complete, bidding is complete, and money is sitting in an account, a federal result, federal account at the county commissioners or being held at the county level, ready for us to use when we choose to do so.
Very good.
Have you heard any word of, I know there's rumors out there about pushing football back or, you know, to spring? Or is that still just a lot of discussion going on?
This will probably be a good time just to talk about a little bit of a debacle this week. There, there got, there was a lot of misinformation. It was reported to me that we had a conference meeting this week and then in fact did not have a conference meeting this week. We had a bunch of head football coaches in the MAC that decided they wanted to get together and be proactive and talk about, well, what if the state decides to do this or what if the state decides to do that? They just wanted to take a proactive approach. As all of you know, conference meetings are not comprised of head football coaches or athletic directors. But somehow it made it out that there was a conference meeting this week. And so the media got hold of that and began to inquire further of the Hospital Athletic Association. It was then, the misinformation then was that Mr. Tucker with the Hospital Athletic Association was going to be making an announcement yesterday on the fate of all fall sports yesterday. And in fact, it was a Q and A session for Commissioner Tucker. So there was a good bit of misinformation floating around. That's kind of what has transpired this week. It was a group of head football coaches in the MAC trying to be proactive and anticipatory of a variety of scenarios. And then the media, you know, inquiring further of Q.
Mr. Francis, I would just add that it is all conjecture at this point. The media is having a lot of fun speculating right now. And I understand it certainly is their job about what classrooms will look like and are we going to have fall sports? And what are we going to do with buses? But in terms of announcements, Trevor's right. I saw a written statement yesterday from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association that they, like us and everyone else, they are waiting on the governor's announcement. And I think what they, what Q did say was that they would do everything in their power to make sure that we would try to have sports if that were permissible. So I think they certainly want to, but their written information to the public on that is that they're also waiting on the governor.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Anything else for me that you can think of? All right, that being said, I'll, I guess, Dr. Nolte, with your permission, would you like me to turn it over to Ms. Barker? All right, Ms. Barker, over here.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam, and good evening, Chairman Francis and members of the board. I've got several updates for you. First, I want to talk to you about Haywood Early College graduation. The community college, their graduation is, you know, as y'all know, is always tied together with the early college. Well, the community college canceled their graduation. Therefore, the early college has, they surveyed their seniors and their parents very thoroughly. They have 25 students who are going to graduate this year. And so they have decided that they're going to hold a graduation on Friday, July 24th at 6:00 at HCC. She wasn't sure where exactly. She was thinking it was going to be outside, but she said if you are able to come and you want to come, that when you pull up at HCC, there are a lot of people directing traffic. But when I talked to her, she felt sure that the parents would stay in the car and the kids would be out since there's 25 of them spread out and that they would hold the graduation. And Dr. White, the new community college president, would also be there. So again, that's Friday, July 24th at 6:00 PM for Haywood Early College. Anybody having questions about that? Okay, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would, I would just add, you know, that if we get into phase three and we have the ability, ability, you know, people, people certain stream that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's what Ms. Fox had said too. So that was the, the plan for right now, since it is just in a couple of weeks. And I think many of the parents wanted to go ahead and have it instead of waiting for later because several of the kids have to go, leave to go to college the next week and different orientations and things like that. And so just wanted to let you know, anything else on early college? The next piece of information, I just want to update you. You know, the state has asked us to, we are required to submit a remote learning plan to the state. It is not for approval, but it is something that they wanted each district to submit. And we have put a lot of time and effort into this plan, the CNI staff. I just want to say thank you to them. And also Byron Burnett and Casey Crook have been helping us too. They're getting doctoral hours toward their doctoral degree. And they've been a great asset to have in those meetings too. You have been, you know, boots kind of on the ground principals out there. So that's been, it's been really good. We're about to wrap it up. I did want to just update you on a few pieces. And again, there were 15 components and it's due July 20th. This is a pretty general document. However, from this, we're going to pull, and we already have done this, best practices for teachers and administrators that we'll be sharing with them at our July administrative retreat. And this is only a plan if we're strictly all remote learning. This is not a hybrid plan. This is just if we go strictly remote learning again. You know, we talked about it was an emergency last year, but this year there are going to be higher expectations for all of our stakeholders if we are remote learning. And so within that, we know we need to survey those stakeholders. And so Dr. Bill and Trevor and I have worked on a survey that the Department of Public Construction sent us. And we took that survey and tweaked it somewhat. And we've had that ready. We thought we'd send it out after the governor's announcement and then he didn't make the announcement. And so I think Dr. Bill is ready to go ahead and pitch that out probably in the next couple of days. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about that survey. And I'll be glad to send you a copy of it prior to it going out so you can look at it. The good piece about it is, is when people complete it, you can, it's for students have a chance to complete it, parents, administrators, teachers, and also classified employees. So when they pick which classification they are, it kind of takes them to their questions that they will answer. Most of the questions are the same pretty much for each group. They vary somewhat. But just to give you an idea, some districts are just sending out about next year. And although we did include that, and we know that's very, very important on people's minds, we also wanted to survey what they thought about the remote instruction that we had at the end of last year because we're not like most districts. We feel like we put our heart and soul into that. And our teachers, y'all, I just want you to know, when you see them, they worked really hard on that. And I know you know that. So a couple of questions I'll share with you and you ask me. And Brooks should be glad to pitch this out tonight if you wanted to see it. But how challenging was your schoolwork? How familiar were you with the distance learning tools? Did you know how to get tech support? Several questions about communication, you know, were your teachers communicating with you? How were they communicating with you? If you're, if you needed help during your remote instruction with your teachers, what was the best way you found that you got help? So we can see how the majority of people were communicating. Talked a lot about feedback, what kind of feedback their teachers were giving students. And, and when it's the students, it's like, did you receive good feedback and things like that? The big one about returning to school that y'all are probably very interested in, the question is worded a little different for each group, but pretty much the same point. How do you feel about physically returning to school in the fall if all safety regulations are met? And one of the choices is very excited, I can't wait, I'm somewhat excited, I'm neutral. I will return, but I prefer remote instruction or I do not want to return to in-person instruction. The following questions ask, what are your primary concerns about your child returning to school? Please check all that apply. And those are, those choices would be public health regs not being followed, confidence in procedures to disinfect school facilities, availability of disinfecting materials, use of PPE, childcare, readjustment to classroom or school life, school bus transportation to and from school, having in-person interaction with others. And then there's a, there's a spot where they can click other and they can list any other concerns they have. So that's just a brief overview of this survey that will go out to our stakeholders. Does anyone, and we'll compile this data, Kim has worked long to get this compiled and share it with you. And any questions about the survey you have for me? Y'all are being so quiet. Okay, um, okay, no questions, I'll continue on. Just one thing, you know, last year that we really tried to, within this remote learning plan, it was very helpful for us to go through, is we need to just streamline our procedures. We kind of got thrown into this and Kim Jackson did a phenomenal job of saying, please just use these couple of platforms. But still, even with that, there were several things being used. Parents, that, that could be mind-boggling to parents if their teachers were trying to communicate with them in several different ways. Assignments being turned in in multiple ways could be, was confusing to kids. So we have really streamlined that and we're in the process right now. ITC is already working on video tutorials for each part of Google Classroom. We will be, we will be very specific about, this is what you use, this is how you complete, you submit assignments. And so that's going to be really good. So we'll have those tutorials available for our beginning of the year staff development meeting. And so that way, hopefully with parents and students, those, those processes and procedures will be more streamlined. And so we're excited about that. The platform that we will use in Haywood County Schools is Google Classroom, Google Meet. And that is our learning platform. And, and our teachers right now are, are very comfortable with that and did a good job. But again, we're going to provide a lot of additional training. That platform has a lot of other unique features that we hadn't necessarily trained teachers on yet. So they're going to get those trainings on August 12th. K2 will use a platform called Seesaw and we will be providing that. That is a lot more interactive for younger children. And most, a lot of our elementary K2 use that this year and they loved it. And so, and what we can talk about, Dr. Putnam can talk about devices too. But that was, that was really popular with them. So they need a little different platform. We have, you know, the 50 wireless points that Dr. Bill and Dr. Putnam have talked to you about several times. And, and Trevor can jump in at any time. Those are being installed currently at our community centers. Several districts chose to put them on school buses. And I love Kim and Dr. Putnam's idea and Dr. Bill of putting them in community centers across the county. And then we're creating a list and a map where students can go and access those that we can distribute to. One thing we need too, the kids that have to download their assignments, we want all that work up by Thursday night. So students will have plenty of time to download it, to go to one of these centers and download it. So they'll have it prior to that week and they'll have all weekend to try to load that. We're also going to provide them this year with a flash drive. So, because if they pull in a parking lot and download, if the teacher's done a video, they couldn't download those instructional videos. So this year they'll be supplied a little jump drive and all their work will be on that. And we can take that back and forth to school. So I appreciate, you know, the thought that's been put into this with our tech department to make sure our students that we provide as equitable resources as possible. We have got a lot of sample schedules. Kim and Jeff, Kim Shipman and Jeff Hany have met with lead teachers and some of our veteran teachers to pull together best practices. So teachers now will have some sample schedules of what days can look like, sample lesson plans. And so they can see these best practices and how those will be put into place. There are also, next year, IP and 5014s will be required if we go fully remote to, in addition to their individuized education plan, they will have to have a remote learning competency plan, which is a new document in addition to their IP. So those things are in there also. Any questions just about that? I'm sorry to overwhelm you with all that, but I just want you to know, you know, we'll be a lot more prepared this year if that is the case. And just want to applaud all of our stakeholders out there last year for a job well done. And we'll do it even better this year if we have to. Any questions about the remote learning plan?
I like it. Sounds good.
And I'll be glad when we get it finished. Thank you. I'll be glad to, you'll have a copy of it and you can look through that too. And what's going to be really important for our administration, our teachers, is just these, these pieces that we really want to streamline for, for our students and things like that. So one other thing I wanted to talk to you about tonight. Our, our state is going to require that parents have an option to have a remote, a remote platform option if they want to. Parents will be able to choose that if they would like. So we are in the process of planning for that. And I kind of want to explain to you what that's probably going to look like. And again, it's not set in stone because until the governor decides or we hear definite direction. But I will tell you, we have looked at several within our region and talking to people. We've looked at several companies that provide remote learning platforms. The two that we have looked at closely, which most regions are going to use or are already using in some capacity, are Edgenuity and Edmentum. And again, these would only, this is a full curriculum. Both of these companies offer a K-12 curriculum. And so if parents chose, if we had school open in Plan A or B, if school is open and parents did not feel comfortable sending their kids, then they could choose this remote platform for a year for their students. So we are just in there digging. We have had several meetings just trying to make sure that this meets our high level of expectation. We know our teachers do it better than anybody. And I told the salesman, all of them, I said, you need to know who you're talking to in the room. We got the highest performing elementary school in the state and the highest performing early college. Like we do this better, but we also know that our parents need an option next year if they, if they feel so. That's their choice. And again, if we have very few of our kids, parents that choose that, then we'll probably give them that access. If we were to have half of our students choose not to come back, then we probably wouldn't need this. We would probably use our own teachers to do remotely. So we're just trying to make those plans based on some of the things we see coming down the road. I did want you to, just to update you on that. Any questions about that for me? Any questions about that for me?
Quiet much.
Okay, you have anything else, Jill?
No, thank y'all so much, I hope everybody's doing great out there.
Francis, if I could give just a brief academic update on one other item that we pushed out today. The state has required us to provide some academic remediation and jumpstart tutoring primarily for last year's first through fourth graders. Jill and Kim Shipman and other people with CNI have been working on that. And we pushed that information out in a press release today. And you, I won't tell you all about it because you all can read it just like everyone else. But essentially, we will look at students who had specialized learning plans already in place before school shut down, as well as those who were not performing well academically before March 13th. And we'll begin calling and inviting the students through their parents to participate in some academic screeners, which we would use to do some small group face-to-face instruction with those students. If all of that remains to be permissible under the summer childcare rules. We will have an option for parents whose students qualify, but they're uncomfortable with face-to-face. And as Jill has already mentioned, it will be good, but it will not be nearly as good as our teachers with data working directly with students. But we pushed that out today, that was part of the state requirement. And before we start thinking about a closed session update, I just want to publicly thank Trevor and all of his folks and Jill and all of her folks for the young men's work that they have been doing during these most unusual times. They have been getting after it and you've seen some reports on that today. And I want to thank the 14 people who are listening to the live stream, whoever you are. Encourage others to listen to the recording lately. These work sessions can be quite informative. Thank you, Mr. Francis, for allowing me to give that update.
Yes, sir. Next on our agenda, we need to go into closed session to discuss some personnel issues. Or can, at this time, then I would entertain a motion that we go into closed session.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Barrett's made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. Everybody get ready to unmute. Ms. Barrett, yay or nay?
Yay.
Mr. Burnett?
Yay.
Mr. Clark?
Yay.
Mr. Francis?
Yay.
Mr. Henson? Mr. Chuck Patrick?
Yay.
Dr. Rogers?
Yay.
Jimmy Rogers?
Yay.
Okay, we're going to go back to Mr. Henson, you still there, Mr. Henson, or did the rain get you?
He's there, but he's muted.
Okay, he must have got into the rainstorm there. Well, motion carries with one to parts unknown at this moment. But at this time, we'll switch over to our other link and I'll meet you on the other side. We'll be in closed session.